Uh, let's be pointing vision to order. If you would all rise, so we can say the pledge of allegiance with you.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, can you do a roll call for me, please?
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Here.
Commissioner Holst.
Here.
Commissioner Kadula.
Here.
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioners Chambers and Plank are absent, and Chair Ellis.
Here.
Do I have a motion to excuse those who were absent?
I'll have a motion to that.
Support?
I'll support.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, the same. Okay. Do I also have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I make a motion. I can support.
And discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, the same. Thank you. Okay. Then we have the approval. Um, and that's from the previous meeting on April eighth. Is there a motion to approve these minutes as written?
I make the motion to approve as written.
I support.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Very good. Okay, I would like to, uh, open up for a public comment on, you may come up, state your name on anything that is not on the agenda. You should have got an agenda, I believe, there were some out there on the desk. Uh, I ask that you state your name and where you live, and we'll listen.
Evening. Robert Rogers, I live at 1319 Cumberland, Lowell Township. My wife and I own 317 East Main, Rogers neighborhood, realty. Couple doors down. Uh, we have two topics. Uh, she's showing houses right now, so it just made, uh, two topics. Uh, the first one is our upstairs. It's completely gutted and vacant. We wanted to let you all know that we're planning on doing two apartments upstairs. We're working with a builder, architect. Uh, we just got the, can't say bad news, but we got the news about sprinkler system, which we didn't budget for, so we're adjusting on that right now. So we're figuring that out, and we just let you know, we're letting you know that we're going to go through the proper channels. I think we might have to come here or something, so we're working with our builder on that. But that's good news, two more apartments in town. Uh, the second thing is not as positive. Uh, our neighbors to the east, All Weather Seal, we believe they have a leak in their roof, which is flooding their back area, which is then seeping into our building. And we've reached out to them a couple times, they've talked a couple things, they've told us it's on our side. Everything is dry on our side except for the floor, which we just called new, and the cabinetry and everything. Uh, so don't know if this is the right group or not, but if you tell us who we have to talk to other than All Weather Seal, which we've been trying. Uh, is there some action that we can take?
What are the means of that, Sue?
Um.
Or Andy?
Yeah.
I'm trying to think, it's not, there we go. Uh, so my previous answer would have been to talk to your neighbor, but you've already done that.
That was going to be my answer, too.
Yeah, um.
We have several texts. Every time it rains, we send them a picture of what it looks like.
Mm-hmm. Do you know approximately where the leak is, and can you get pictures of it, or?
I went up there last night to talk what they said was leaking on our side. Again, just to make them happy, I talked it. Uh, but actually, last night, there wasn't enough rain to flood. We checked today. It might be flooded in their area, but it's not enough to come over to our area. Uh, I walked up on the roof over on our side, the west side, with their permission to caulk our side. I didn't see anything. I actually brought a push broom up there, pushed a lot of mud. There's actually two weeds that were growing in dirt. But I moved everything around, swished things around all the water, trying to find the leak, and I couldn't. But I didn't do the entire roof. So it could be actually on the far east side, as far as I know.
I'd almost think we're going to have to get a builder or a rofer to apply a finger.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, I don't know that that's a, something that the city would have any jurisdiction in typically. Um, yeah, I mean, other than trying to figure it out, I mean, yeah, hiring someone who's working with, uh, with your neighbor to determine the source of the leak and then how it gets handled is not. I don't know there's a role for the city in that process.
We didn't think so either, but we're.
Yeah, I think if anything, I'll let you know, but I don't, I don't think we're going to have that.
Yeah, we want to try not to get legal insurance companies involved, but we didn't know if there was some notice that you all could give them or something, I don't know, but.
I don't think so, I would make sure, get a professional inspection on your part and say.
Our, we just got a new roof on our building.
Oh, yeah.
So there's, we don't need an inspection.
Maybe get a notice from them saying, "Our hat is new."
Okay, well, we'll continue to text them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Yeah.
Any other public comment or discussion of items not on the agenda? No? Okay. I'm going to close that public hearing then. Um, glasses here. Uh, old business. Uh, I'd like to open another public hearing after we get a little summary from Andy about the amendment on the temporary use ordinance.
Yep.
Backing that we all have.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this has been something we've been talking about, uh, off and on for a little while now. Um, what we're proposing to do is amend the section of zoning ordinance, section four point one zero, to authorize, um, what we're calling seasonal merchandise sales. So, um, Christmas trees, fireworks would fall into this category, some other stuff. Um, and as we've been talking about it, one of the things that they sort of, over the last year or two, has kind of come out of this type of conversation is that the city does not really desire to see, you know, really large items left for sale, or cars, tractors, boats, et cetera. So what we're, what we are doing here in, so in the ordinance you have in, in, in front of you, there's all this text that's highlighted in red, that's would be new text that's going into zoning ordinance. Everything that's in black, so the subsection A one and two, then the subsection C one through four, that's already included, so we're just going to add to that. Um, and so we started to have this conversation last month. Um, and I think everyone was kind of on the same page, except for the sort of question came up at the ball. What do we do if someone wants to have like, you know, a liberty of major sale or whatever on its outside? The idea, the thing of the amendment that everyone, um, is sort of supportive of is, is the idea that the thing that they're selling needs to be like directly tied to the season. So like Christmas tree, we're not just going to try and, Christmas season. Fireworks will be closely tied to, um, Independence Day, so when they're selling pumpkins or something like that, they'll be closely tied to typical fall, autumn harvest, you know, seasonal types of things. Um, but, you know, you all had to express a little bit of a hesitation with the idea of just someone declaring, you know, Memorial Day, the season that we want to sell. Again, not to pick my mattress, it's been one stuck in my head, right? So, but it could be, it could be literally anything else that someone would just want to sell, have a big sale about it. So we've attempted to clarify that, and subsection three was the language here that's highlighted in yellow. Um, so we added some language here that says the merchandise offered for sale should be limited to small items directly related to the series, seasonal or periodic event. Um, and then we added some language at the bottom, too, that basically says that there's a, allows the zoning administrator to, you know, refer any of these sorts of applications to the planning commission. So if there's some sort of a dispute, or if someone's like, no, you know, this is totally a seasonal sale that I'm having, it's fairly tied to that, and we're not comfortable with it for some reason, um, staff could send this or refer it to the planning commission for a full decision. Um, so those were, were the two things to be added. I don't know if that fully sort of answers or satisfies what your thought process was here, um, but that's how we kind of tried to address it. We didn't change anything else in here from the version that you had last month, so it'd be four additional changes we had under subsection C. Are left as is, uh, there's no changes there. Um, so that's pretty much it. And then this is a, uh, public hearing, so, um, Mr. Chairman, once kind of we're done, if there's any initial questions for me from the planning commission, it would be appropriate to open the public hearing, any hearing, public comments, and then close it, and then we can, we can move on from there. Uh, so with that, I'll turn it back over to you unless there are questions, and you can continue.
Any discussion on this? I think it's good, the, the language, after reading it, I think it clears a lot of people up. Uh, thank you, Andy. Before we go to open the public, then?
Yep, I would open the public hearing at this point. Just like before, if there's anyone from, from the public that has comments on this item specifically, name and address, and they got three minutes.
So I'm going to open this up to your opinions. Uh, this ordinance was to help us have a little more control on who comes in and sets up and sells and to our city, I guess. We're really trying, we're trying to help sort of the people of the city a little bit better, protect a little bit. That was the purpose of looking at this ordinance. So presently, if you want to come up and say your name, where you live, any comments on this particular topic? You guys are a tough crowd. If there are no comments, are you going to close the public hearing? And do I have, I will entertain a motion to accept this as written? So this is a zoning ordinance amendment? So Sue, did we notice this for the public hearing?
Yes.
You did, okay. It's, it's our reason to remember that, so I just wanted to make sure that we noticed it correctly.
Yes.
Um, so this is a zoning ordinance change, so your motion would be to recommend adoption of this ordinance to the city council.
I have this motion.
Do I have?
I'll support it.
I have a motion.
I, oh, well, I make a motion, could be accurate.
To get approved by the, that city council?
I'll support.
Any discussion? Further discussion on it?
I just have one question. Andy, we did get this reviewed by the attorney, right? Because I know that was part of the discussion last week.
I've not heard back from her yet, but she'll get it in between now and the council meeting. The council can change if there's anything here that, that she finds troublesome. But we've talked about it before, and I don't think she'll have any significant objections.
Can you, can you clarify just the method that it would get approved to us? So just if they're not comfortable with making this decision?
Yes, so it would, it would come from staff. So basically, the way I view this is that if we think that it's going to be, um, you know, if we have, in my mind, I, I see this as if staff is really concerned about these standards one through eight under subsection C, for questioning those or something like that. Or if it's, um, if there's some kind of, and I can't, I don't, I don't know what this is off the top of my head. But if there's something where there's sort of a gray area between whether or not it's directly related, or whether or not it's a large item or a small, you know, that kind of stuff, um, those are the instances in which I would see us preferring this to the planning commission for a decision. And in that case, there wouldn't be any kind of, you know, public hearing necessarily. It would just be to, you know, kind of just make a decision on, on whether or not the standards are met and whether or not the information is there. That's how I see that sort of planning, I was trying to help us resolve any ambiguities or gray areas or other, other instances. We don't get a ton of these types of applications, so I don't, I don't foresee us like beating down your doors and filling up your agenda with these. We only do a few a year almost. So, um, but it, yeah, it's, it's there, I think, to sort of allow for the types of sales that we want and to discourage or disable the types of ones that we don't want.
So in the past, they would come in, just tell us what they're, what they're going to do, give us a lowdown, and we would have these rules in front of us that we could say, okay, what about parking?
Yeah.
It's going to cause a hazard?
Traffic? Yeah, well, in the past, we didn't, we did not have one. Right now, we do not have a great way to deal with these at all. Um, with Jakes and with, uh, when West Michigan Auto Exchange was here, we had to process, process those as like a special name use permit for like an outdoor sales thing. And it's not really what that's intended for, it's not really what the special use permit process is intended for, because it's a temporary thing that'll last for a month or in some cases like a weekend. So going through all of this effort in a public hearing, and on and on and on, for something that was very, very short-lived, for a, a type of permit that really runs with the land perpetually, didn't really make any sense. So I've been wanting to make a change like this for a long time, and we just haven't really had a good reason to do, to, to do so, because again, we don't get many applications like this. Um, but with, we've continuously been working with Jakes, that's worked out okay. But this West Michigan Auto Exchange thing we've dealt with the last couple years really sort of pushed that to the forefront. And so that was when we, you all kind of collectively decided that, okay, let's, let's figure this out and find a better way to do it. So in the future, the, the, those kinds of requests aren't going to, most of them aren't going to come in front of the planning commission. If someone wants to set up a temporary block, fireworks or Christmas tree or something like that, they'll come to staff first, and if we think it's okay and meets these standards, we'll just allow it and approve it, and off they go. No big deal. It's only the ones where we're kind of unsure or concerned about some particular aspect of it, we might send it your way, so, um.
Another question. Uh, New Union Brewery, the food trucks that are there, that wouldn't fall under this, correct?
No, we have a separate mobile food vending ordinance, so food vendors have to get a license, and there's a process there that Sue and I work through when somebody comes in and asks for one of those.
Okay. Likewise, with the festivals or craft shows that are coming?
Those are all exempt under, well, the, so the city can basically do whatever it wants, because it's the government. Um, there's a separate police power, uh, licensing or regulatory ordinance about, about, uh, transient merchants and solicitors and peddlers and all that.
City events.
City events and all that stuff is totally exempt as well.
Yep. Okay. Any discussions, questions? There is a motion on the table, uh, to send it to the city council for approval. Uh, are you ready to vote? Voiceover, Sue?
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Holst.
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett.
Yes.
And Chair Ellis.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, next we have, uh, master plan update, Andy.
All right, so, you recall the last meeting, and maybe you all some homework. I hope you were attentive students. Um, so what we said that we were going to do, and what we did was, um, we wrapped up the last of the engagement and visioning efforts, like, a couple of days after our last meeting.
I need to close the public hearing.
You did?
Yeah. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
You're okay, no problem. Um, so, uh, after the last meeting, we had the last couple of engagement events. Uh, knowing those were going to be coming to a close, and knowing that, um, you were going to be, uh, thinking about how this all relates to policy and making decisions moving forward in the new plan, I handed out that worksheet that basically contains all of the goals and objectives from the city's existing master plan and, and our sort of marching orders for you guys, uh, was to look through the engagement reports and all the information in there. I know it's a lot. Um, and then kind of think about your vision for the future of the community, and sort of think about what sort of new goals and objectives we might want to add, if we need to keep what we currently have, if we need to modify those, if we need to look at some, and things like that. So tonight, what I'd like to do is just kind of all walk briefly through the engagement report just for your benefit and the benefit of the people that are here, and what the results of those were, because I'm sure that not everyone knows exactly what every, you know, thing and task was that we did, since we're quite a bit. Um, but I'd like to spend the, the, most of, of, of the meeting, kind of at least getting some major discussion points from you all about where you want to go and what are some of the goals or objectives or ideas that you sort of jot down on the worksheet. You don't anticipate us going through here page by page unless you want to. Um, but I'd like to kind of get some of your key points, and then I'll collect everything at the end. And then next month, I'm going to bring back sort of a revised written goal and objective that incorporates all of your comments, um, and anything else that, that, you know, may come up based on what's in the report. So, let's get to the report. So, um, this is a fairly long document, it's about a hundred pages. Um, it's not all super text heavy, but, uh, so we have, uh, we'll talk a, a, a little bit about what all of the input, you know, or what all of the, these engagement efforts were that we, you know, did sort of collect community input for the master plan. So we had, um, an online survey that was open in August of last year, and it was open for at least a couple of months, quite a long time. Uh, we had two pop-up planning events. We had one in August of twenty twenty-three. We were supposed to have a second one in August of twenty twenty-three, but that was when the tornado warning was, and so the, the concert got canceled. Uh, after talking with the staff, we decided to wait and do it after the New Year, so we set up at the expo back in March. Um, spent our Saturday morning there. In December, we went to Lowell Middle, Middle School and sat down with a class there and took them through a series of, of vision exercises at the youth perspective. Um, then we also did four sort of what we call the stakeholder vision workshops. Uh, one was with the planning commission, one was with the DDA, one was with the city council, and then one was with the Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, and so this report really, uh, brings forward and sort of gives you the results of all of these events. So that's kind of what this whole, whole report does, is just, it's a big, you know, data dump, sort of. Um, so it summarizes all of the, uh, events and, and the results. We'll kind of briefly go, go through those. Um, so the two, uh, pop-up planning engagement activities, we brought the same materials to each one, so we can kind of, you know, compare and have a broader base of responses for, for similar questions. Um, so we asked people what type of housing they support in the community. Um, as you can see here, there is support for most types of housing in, in the, in the community, including single-family homes, tiny homes, courtyard communities, uh, single-family homes with an accessory dwelling. Um, and there was some sort of lukewarm reception to, um, uh, townhomes and, you know, slow-rise apartments or mixed-use buildings. Um, we also have, uh, we had a question and a map where we asked about people's vision for West Main Street. Um, and these are kind of summarized below as people wanting to see additional dining options, uh, some community and recreational facilities. Some of these comments, by the way, aren't strictly West Main, even though that's what we asked, so we'll see some responses in here that might seem a little, um, unusual given the context. So, or approach with these is to just accept all of the comment and figure it out, you know, we're not going to tell someone, you know, what they can or can't say. So anyways, uh, dining options, additional community and, and recreational facilities, which may include sidewalks, pools mentioned a few times, um, things like that. Uh, housing and, and development, specifically, uh, low-income or attainable or affordable housing. Um, traffic and safety improvements on, on West Main, suggestions including widening West Main Street, adding a left-hand turn, adding crosswalks, um, addressing concerns on traffic on M twenty-one at Lincoln Lake. Um, community engagements and services, so there are comments about a community center. There were suggestions about revitalizing buildings downtown. There were a lot of people commented on the marijuana facilities, uh, basically saying there are too many of them. That was prevalent in every event that we did, students and adults alike. Um, another event or another activity that we had was this penny jar voting. So if you didn't go to any, any of these events, what we did was we set out a series of ten mason jars and gave everyone ten pennies. Each of the mason jars had one of these topics written on it that are listed here. The idea was these ten pennies that we're giving you represent your tax dollars. We want you to invest your tax dollars in any way you want, prioritize them however you want, so we can kind of see what's important to people when you add it all up. Uh, so during both events, we collected about fifteen hundred pennies in total, so pretty good results, uh, pretty good participation here. Um, and so the, the voting, once we did all of the math and counted up all, all of the pennies was, uh, we were upgrading infrastructure, improvements to sidewalks and trails, creating more sustainable housing options, park improvements. Um, you can kind of read on down from the list here. Um, pretty much everything got, got some number of votes, but as you can see here, there were some that were really, uh, really, really popular choices. Um, didn't surprise me too much, these topics here. I mean, one, Lowell has been emphasizing some of these things for a number of years, you know, like street improvements, trails specifically come to mind. Um, and the housing conversation is something that's been ongoing, not just here, but in a lot of communities all over the state and nationally, honestly, is. A lot of people are, are realizing that housing, you know, prices are getting not attainable for a lot of sort of, you know, middle-income, you know, working-age people. Uh, we have a bunch of comments cards, we're not going to read through every single one of these here, but again, the comments are all over the map in terms of, of, of people's desires, but a lot of good feedback here as well. Um, the stakeholder visioning workshops, so these were the four that I mentioned that were with the planning commission, the city council, the DDA, and the Parks Commission. Um, again, looking through some of the biggest opportunities here. Um, housing comes up here several times, kind of high priorities, as the park, as do parks, trails, uh, river improvements. Um, you know, there, there were some concerns, obviously, about costs, about additional regulators, about traffic, uh, overdevelopment, things like that. But there's just lots of, 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 of great data here. We also presented everybody with the vision statement from the existing master plan and asked if this still meets sort of what your vision is for the future of the community. A lot of people said, yeah, sort of, but everyone kind of came up with their own flavor of what that statement should, should look like. Um, so there were some changes here, the planning commission, um, had a few changes. The DDA, um, wanted to, you know, emphasize activity and, and change, and vibrancy and things like that. Um, the city council came up with, with their own sentence here, again, talking about a vibrant downtown and history and, and referencing public art as a priority. Um, and then again, similarly, the Parks and Recreation Commission also expressed some, some interest in, in retaining, uh, language relating to natural resources. Um, again, history and forward-looking and having sort of a sense of community pride and things like that. Um, the classroom collaboration that we did in December was, uh, it was a fun hour and a half or so. Um, so we went into a middle school classroom, working with staff, to kind of come up with some, some activities. Uh, we asked people what they love about Lowell. You know, some of these are, you know, goofy comments, but the big ones, so the more time something was mentioned or typed in by a student, the larger the text is. So we see, uh, some of the more prevalent comments on here, parks, fishing, friends, sports, et cetera. Again, some of it is what you would expect from, from, from students, but I do think that consistent with a lot of what was said previously by everyone else is that there's a big emphasis on parks, um, and, and having active recreation spaces. Um, what traces do you think at best represents Lowell? Um, people felt, students felt it was generally easy to get around, a great place to grow up, show of a city, resonated with, with, with students a fair amount. Um, a lot of them considered, considered it to be family-oriented as well. Um, that's why the comments here. Um, we asked people how they got around town. Most of them rode around in a car, a few of them walked. Not many rode their bike or took a scooter with them, that was kind of interesting. Um, and then we also asked people relative to this one, we asked them, you know, on a sort of agree-disagree scale, how do you feel about these pavements? Um, most of them do feel safe, uh, but they add that they need more trails to get around town. So it's, it, it just feels to me like there's a little bit, and again, this goes back to what a lot of other, other people say, is that as much good work has been done by the city on trails and making those, those connections, um, we'll probably need to look at sidewalks and kind of. we'll probably need to look at sidewalks and kind of making sure that everyone is able to get around pretty easily, even if you don't have a car. We asked people what to do for fun around here, what they would like to see improved, more hangouts, more bike lanes, more tech, we're kind of the top three, but again, overwhelmingly kind of comfortable places for kids to hang out is sort of the number one vote getter here. And then we also gave a few other questions here. So we asked the students, when you're growing up, what are you what are you going to look for in your community? Most of them picked a family-friendly one. Additionally, something that's close to work and safe and not not clearly surprising here is kind of the top, top vote getters for the students. So we did this sort of heat index activity. So the idea here was that we wanted them to identify the most pressing issues and then sort of a second and third most pressing. So the sizzling is the hottest, need to deal with that right-of-way issues. As you can see here, even amongst the students, there's a lot of resistance to the number of marijuana facilities in the city. Again, some of whom are are related to places to hang out, places to visit, things like that. Some of them are very specific, obviously. On the hot issues, we have again, sports, family-owned businesses, park improvements, traffic, things like this. Not enough stuff to do. So again, getting back to the idea of having hangouts for 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 students. And then kind of back burner issues for them were using the buildings on main streets for apartments, internet, more activities. There's some references in here to dealing with unhoused people or drugs or crime or or things like that. So there's certainly some concerns even amongst the students about some of these issues. And these aren't entirely planning issues, but I think there's something to be taught in moving forward. Several comments here, so we gave them the penny jar activities as well. Interestingly, the students have voted as zoning and code of enforcement is something that was surely a high priority to them, which that was interesting. You know, it makes me wonder if they're sort of looking at this through a largely aesthetic kind of lens and if they see properties or they live near properties where they're not well-kept. That might be at the top of their mind. Otherwise, a lot of them were sort of as were pretty similar to what other people had stated. So upgrading infrastructure, for the most part, referred to streets. And everyone wants everyone to fix the roads. That's a pretty common refrain that we hear here and elsewhere. Additionally, sidewalks and trails, river access, et cetera. Then the survey, we have a lot of data from the survey. I'm not going to get too long with it if we hear, but most of our residents were Lowell residents from the city proper, not the. We did have some from both regents and Lowell Charter Township. Most of them were longtime residents. Most of them were residents. The ages were fairly fairly evenly broken down amongst all age ranges, which I was pleased to see. Sometimes with these surveys, we see they skew really heavily towards the older end of the age spectrum. So I was happy to see that we have a good mix of of younger adults and older people completing the survey as well. We asked about household size. We asked about why they wouldn't live in Lowell or why they do live in Lowell. Safety, near Grand Rapids, parks, local character. Again, a lot of the strengths that we all know Lowell has is what people are really drawn to here in this in this in this community. Single-family homes is where everybody lives, for the most part. I mean, there's a mother few other ones, but I have to say, as we all know, this is largely a single-family residential city. A lot of variation on what types of housing are needed in the city. So in addition to single-family, which was again, by far the number one vote getter here, there was also some support for a variety of other types of housing options, right? So apartments, attached, single-family residential, attached residential like duplexes or townhomes or something. Mixed-use retirement, et cetera, et cetera. There's at least some limited support for a lot of different things. Some of these, the city does a lot of it all right now. Other ones we do, but we don't get a lot of applications for it. So yes, this along with some other responses to me suggests that we should be at least contemplating enablement of different types of housing other than single-family and a little bit of of two-family or multifamily. We'll get into that in greater detail in in future meetings as we sort of complete the plan. But I think this is worth thinking about moving forward. New types of businesses, so sit-down restaurants, groceries, retail groceries. And this came up other places as well. Grocery, we know there's a Meyer in the township, but there was some interest expressed in in a smaller scale grocery. It's not the size of a Meyer or something, it's smaller. We asked people where they're most likely to go for goods or services. So pretty much the choices where everyone goes is either Lowell or or Grand Rapids area. Not many people are going from here to Ada or Greenville or Ionia. Overall, let's see, there's some other kind of key findings here. Streets, sidewalks, and street skapes were important to people. Lots of written comments on some of these. River access, there was a strong purpose to protect natural areas along the river. And to ban boardwalks and trails along the river. So these are a little bit of of competing interest here. So we'll have to sort of find a way to do both as we work through this process or at least recommend both. So we can have some river access, but maybe not completely wiping out any and all natural areas that might exist along there. Downtown improvement and encouraging redevelopment downtown were important business priorities for people. Neighborhood improvements, housing opportunities for families, for young professionals. You know, across the board, pretty much everyone had at least 50% support for housing in all kinds of different forms. Future vision for Lowell, safe was a big one here, affordable, friendly, welcoming, clean are like good words in here that I think again, represent the pride in the city that a lot of people feel. Number of concerns about marijuana, and this is summarizing a lot of the other comments, but there were concerns about the marijuana facilities, downtown improvements, infrastructure, new amenities and services. And again, this was on, this is all publicly available, by the way, moving forward. So we also have, we attach to this kind of the raw data. So if anyone really wants to dig through like all of the survey stuff, it's all in here. Every single written comment or note largely unedited is here available for for review. So with all of that in mind, and I know it's like a ton of information, what I would like to do is I'm going to pull up the worksheet here. And so what we had asked at the previous meeting is we had provided you with this worksheet. And the idea was that on the subsequent pages, we have all of these goal and objective statements that are in the old plan. And so I guess Mr. Chairman will start kind of with you to, I guess, kind of facilitate a conversation. But what I'd like to do is just kind of go through these and just sort of hit some highlights or or things that we need to focus on or changes that we need to make to each of these statements kind of going forward. And then at the end, I'll sort of collect what everybody has 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 prepared or you can email them to me if you don't have them written down with you. And our job will be to take everything that you've told us and to sort of draft a new set of goals and objectives that we will review at our new meeting.
I was going to say, can you, this is an amazing prior thing. It's amazing that I read through it in detail and like summary, roads, safe. Let's make our assets attainable and now the city council will see this and use it as well, correct?
Yeah, so this is going to be available for everybody. The master plan, however, is primarily a planning commission-driven document. So what we will eventually do is is, you know, us, you with our guidance, you know, we're going to put together the entire plan cover to cover. The whole thing will be done and you'll send it to them as a draft to look at. But all of the initial work and the decisions and the future land use designations and all these goals and objectives, this is going to be a planning commission document. So we want you to really sort of own this thing and 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 drive it forward. And certainly, the city council will be able to make suggestions and, you know, they might want some modifications here or there. But this is going to be yours. This is going to be something that that you are going to be reviewing and using and dealing with. And it's going to drive, you know, city policy, city regulations, city actions and initiatives and projects for, you know, years and years to come. So it's important that we sort of get everything, everything that's been talked about and that we've been talking about with you for the last, you know, eight, nine, 10 months now. Get it out on on paper, get it in writing, get it articulated so that you all and then future generations of planning commissioners can use this stuff moving forward.
I would say I think there's some short-term things that they want to see, but also some really good long-term. And I think we use that as a good tool as we develop this new city plan. So you want to just review them individually?
Yeah, so let's.
Discussion on them?
I guess it's up to you. I think it might be easiest to kind of, so on each of these sheets and all caps on the top of each page, we have various topic areas. We don't have to maintain these, but honestly, I kind of like them for this purpose. And eventually, we might reorganize them or 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 do it over, but I think for now, let's just stick with, we'll maybe just do one page at a time. So we'll start with this growth and development. We have the existing goals that are written here and here. And then again, if if these need to, if you're comfortable with these, that's fine. If you're comfortable with the objectives, that's fine. If you want to add to that, if you want to create a new goal or new objectives, that's all stuff that I think we should be discussing, discussing tight.
Do you want me to delete it or?
Yeah, go right ahead. I'm going to unplug this here so that you can have your screen back.
I hope all of you have gotten a chance to review this. The first top section, A and B. Did you, can I just say what you want to say? Keep or the keep, combine, remove, or?
I would keep for the first two, for A and B.
Yep. Yeah, I had keep as well, the first two.
Same. I wondered if for B, we might be able to update some of the examples. I wasn't sure if any of the examples maybe needed a refresh, but the sentiment as a whole, I thought was worth keeping. Yep.
Okay. The next two. Start with you again.
I had, well, definitely, I think it may be a discussion. I don't want you to talk to Mike about this, but just for the water expansion for, I was just reading that. I thought that more about for the industrial development, with the whole. Expansion, you know, planned out there with everything, with all the facility, you know.
Of the water.
Yeah. Like, I don't know.
The working with the townships.
Yeah, I think, I don't know, like, I think we might need a little more discussion on this one a little bit. I don't know if it's, this is the correct section for it, but.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, so if the goal reads it, Lowell will undertake cooperative efforts with surrounding townships to increase opportunities for new industrial development that will benefit all communities, right? So that's the overarching goal. And then underneath that, we have these two slightly more specific objectives that are pretty similar in that there will be an acceptable policy for the provision of services. And then the and then both will encourage development that fits the community or environmentally friendly and encompass light manufacturing. So I mean, if it's, you know, given, and I don't know a lot of the specifics about the uses proposed out there.
Correct.
But I think what's going on now is probably consistent with this kind of a statement.
I do.
You know, light manufacturing to me is, you know, that's not something, I don't know how much of that there is anymore and how much there's going to be. So that may be something you can broaden potentially, but I think large scale, I mean, if this is the direction you want to continue to go, certainly, yeah, Mike and others at city council and Rich and the rest of the.
Yes.
We'll have input there because there's a lot of feasibility questions and costs and so on and so forth. But I think big picture, the question is, you know, is this a policy that you would embrace?
Yes.
Generally, methods.
Yes, I would keep for both. I just think we need to get some things figured out.
That's a big, it's a big issue. It's always yours for that. Yeah, keep both.
I just, I recommend it on that second one for B, that we either delete or define fit the community. It seems to be kind of the theme throughout the entire master plan and all the feedback we got. What does that mean?
Fit the community, you said.
Yeah. What does that mean? Because at some point, people thought marijuana shops fit the community and now we're getting feedback that they don't. So are we adhering to that or are we just saying stuff like that?
To that same point, I made a note that maybe somewhere in maybe B, I thought B might be the best spot, but working in something about the free market, like to the best of the free market, you know?
That's right. I also wanted to define light manufacturing. That was my comment. I kept both, but said some new words for define a little bit more. Either in the definitions page, I'm sure there is one, but we'll leave one.
Yeah, well, you know, there don't be definitions like there are in zoning, but I think your point is a good one that we would perhaps expand upon what you envision as appropriate industrial development, right? Maybe it's not just light manufacturing. There's lots of other, you know, industrial facilities that aren't necessarily manufacturing anymore or that might be appropriate out there, whether it's a technology-driven or manufacturing-driven or whatever something driven by some other industry we don't know.
On the backside of that paper, community image, will foster its image as a historical community featuring eternal and century architecture, rich cultural history and important natural features such as Flat River and Grand River. What was your take on these?
Mike? I had keep for both, too.
Yeah, go.
For A, I just had a note that the section about including demolition of U blocking buildings and structures piece maybe seemed to go against some of the recent things that have happened since this was created. So I wasn't sure if we wanted to modify that or if we were going to stick with that thought and try again.
John?
I had kind of the same, I had keep for both, but I had kind of a question. What would be, can we identify the U blocking buildings and structures right now? And then how do we, how does the city affect the demolition of its zone by somebody privately?
I mean, my thought process was the condos here kind of blocked some view. The the utility building over there, there was a thought at one point of building up there, which would block a view. So it felt like we were maybe not following that objective in the last few years. And if that's the thought we're going, then we need to amend that objective. But if that's not where we want to go, then maybe it's okay.
I, measures we've undertaken to improve access, what measures, I guess. And I, on that same note, I almost add another one as C is maintaining the waterway. What are we going to do to maintain the waterway so we actually?